And a call to order, could we have the roll call, please, Weston?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Stix.
Here.
Mayor Protim Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Lang.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
And Councilmember Rule is not present, but should be attending later via Zoom.
Thank you, Weston. And according to law, I'm going to read this statement about Councilmember Rule attending virtually. "Good evening, the Brown Act authorizes members of the City Council to participate in meetings remotely under certain conditions. Assembly Bill 2449, which was signed into law by Governor Newsom on September 13th, 2022, and is effective January 1st, 2023, permits council members to participate in city council meetings remotely when they can demonstrate just cause or emergency circumstances, and when a quorum of the city council is physically present in the city. Councilmember Rule is participating in tonight's meeting remotely under AB 2449. Councilmember Rule is participating under the emergency circumstances exception given to Councilmember Rule. She will be participating in tonight's meeting using audiovisual technology. Per AB 2449, a council member participating remotely due to emergency circumstances requires council consent." I'll ask if there's any opposition in this request. Nope, okay. Seeing none, we will proceed, and when Councilmember Rule does zoom in, I'll read one more section. Thank you. Weston, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you.
Welcome council staff and community. Our American flag is in the back of the room here. Right hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Weston. And is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve it, the agenda.
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We will move on to our discussion item. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Ojai, California, affirming Ojai's City of Peace commitment and support of congressional and international calls for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza. I just want to, before we begin, say a big thank you to Councilmember Lang for collaborating with me. Leadership is collaboration, and I'm really grateful for all your help on this. I'd also like to say a big thank you to the many community members who have been passionately making their opinions on this topic known with civility. There has been an outpouring of viewpoints, to say the least. The council, staff, community, and Jewish community leaders and members have demonstrated Ojai's deep caring about our town, as well as the tragedy unfolding in Israel and Gaza. Let's take a moment tonight in silence for all of those on the planet who are suffering without adequate food, water, medicine, medical facilities, sanitation, electricity, as well as freedom, and for the innocent people who have died. So if we could just take a moment in silence. Thank you. Rachel and I would like to briefly just give a little background to everyone, just to explain to the public how we got here today. So to begin, on November 14th, a large group of peace activists came with a resolution to a city council meeting.
Yes, and I was very moved by what they shared and by the request, and by the fact that we had a whole group of people organized in our community who wanted to make a statement about peace. And so I asked that it was agendized, and the rest of the council agreed to agendize it for November 28th. And the mayor and I worked on it with our city attorney, and we consulted with the Ceasefire Now! group. We also consulted with some of Rabbi Morty and other Jewish members of our community, and we came up with a compromise, a general peace resolution that expressed a whole wide range of views. And it became clear when we had that discussion on the 28th that the council was not prepared. We didn't feel, I believe it was Mayor Protim Francina, who said, "This is, we need more information. What can we, you know, is this really within our purview to be raising a resolution like this?" So we agreed that we needed to do more homework, and I invited people to come to a meeting in Daly Park, and where I have quarterly get-togethers. And so we put this on pause. We didn't take any action.
And since the 28th, I have conversed with over 45, I've had 45 different conversations with my constituents on this topic, including Rabbi Morty and Rabbi Lisa. At the December 12th council meeting, community members again passionately conveyed their views for a few hours. At that meeting, we had some time-sensitive things on the agenda. We did end up staying there till quarter till 1, which is better than quarter till 3. And it became clear to all of us that we needed a separate meeting. So council decided on tonight. Since then, we've worked on the original resolution. There were edits, additions, subtractions. And since December 12th, I think we, I know that we've all heard from many, many community members, you know, in the grocery store, in the park, on the street, phone calls, emails. A lot of people who cared deeply about this, and I think I've learned so much.
Yes, and I want to reiterate, too, that this is something that many communities across the country are looking at. I know we've, see, I've seen a lot on social media, and I've received, we've received public comments saying, "What can a city, why is this an important matter?" And there, you know, the I-10 was closed down in LA with demonstrators. The, you know, there are, Seattle, Atlanta, lots of city councils are are working on similar resolutions. One thing that is important to me, that has been important to me, is that many members of our community, and in particular, our Jewish community, have expressed that, that this, that some of the language does not make them feel safe at a time when hate is so palpable. And so I personally don't want to sign any legislation or to be a part of any policymaking that makes anyone in our communities feel safe, feel unsafe, rather. So I'm aware of the fact that our goal here, as your representatives, is to serve this community. And that we don't have a lot of say in what's happening in Congress, except that we are voices among others. You know, this is why cities like Berkeley and other cities have opted to not have a ceasefire resolution while other cities have. So as we talk about this, in the spirit of safety, I'm just going to encourage everyone to be really mindful of the words that we use, of how we talk about things that are taking place. There's a lot of, there's a lot of trauma, generational trauma. There's a lot of, we're all in a collective grief right now. No one can see the heartbreak that's going on and not feel that heartbreak as if it's your own. And so as you're talking and giving comments tonight, please just be aware of the many experiences that are represented here. And I'm also going to just give a trigger warning for anybody who's watching this, too. You know, this would probably not be the meeting to have your children in the room while you're watching this at home. Just, we want to be really sensitive and create a safe space for us to talk about these things tonight.
Thank you. Some in our community have expressed opposition to the draft of the peace resolution that we proposed on November 14th, or that was proposed on November 14th. "In an effort to facilitate a compromise, at present, I'm proposing a scaled-back resolution that several community members have promoted in the last week or so. This encourages federal officials to achieve two objectives: save lives and create a reasonably safe environment to deliver much-needed humanitarian aid. Should the council adopt, choose, to, the council choose to adopt language from the U.S. House of Representatives, H.R. 786, we would be acting in alignment with our values as an international city of peace, while also allowing Israel the right to defend itself should the need arise. While the compromise solution does not, does encourage our federal government to call for and facilitate de-escalation and a ceasefire, it does not assert any requirement that Israel withdraw military forces from Gaza, thereby allowing Israel to maintain full readiness to defend itself as needed on a moment's notice." And we are a city of peace, so Councilmember Lang is going to read our proclamation that was, came out in 2015.
And I want to thank Ray Powers for sending this and inviting us to speak this into the room tonight as we start our discussion. "City of Ojai Proclamation. Whereas a group of local citizens has gathered with the intention of Ojai becoming an international city of peace, and whereas the International Cities of Peace Initiative was incorporated in 2009 with a vision to foster peace as a consensus value in cities of peace around the world, and whereas the initiative envisions a world where cities are dedicated to expanding their local peace economy and encouraging a global culture of peace, and whereas safety, prosperity, and equality of life are universal values that bring peace to our lives, and whereas currently there are 100 official cities of peace around the world with an intention for 1,000 by 2020. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Severo Lara, Mayor of City of Ojai, and on behalf of the Ojai City Council, do hereby proclaim the City of Ojai an international city of peace on this 14th day of April, 2015."
Thank you, Rachel. And I believe now there are 400 cities of peace, international city of peace? So regardless of what the council decides tonight, let's tonight do our best to hear our neighbors and treat one another with respect, which means respecting other people's right to have viewpoints that differ from our own. Let's allow tonight to be a symbol of what could be when we personally embrace peace as a practice in every moment. Peace comes from within and from without. Let's all make a universal and personal commitment to peace and listening and model the change tonight that we want to see in the world. We all agree that peace is the goal. By committing to it as an everyday practice, we lead the way. So we will begin with...
And can I just clarify?
Yes, of course.
So I just want to clarify one, one thing. So the mayor talked about new language, and, and so, you know, we have, we have a couple of different options tonight.
Is there, excuse me, is there a copy for everyone in the room?
There should be.
Yes.
I am able to print out some copies in a few minutes.
And if you, if you look up Resolution 786 on your phone, it's right there.
So, so there are...
There's probably more people than we can make copies for physically on paper, but what we can do is get it up on the Zoom screen so that everyone can see it on the screens. We'll ask staff to do that as we go forward.
Great, thank you. So we have a couple of different options, just real simply. One, we could dismiss this like we did the first time and say, "This isn't within our, within our jurisdiction." Two, we could amend the proposed resolution that that is posted online with some of this new language, making it something that would be more universal in our community. Or three, we could adopt the resolution as it is. So we have different options, but we really want to hear, we really want to listen, we really want to hear what, what you're feeling, what you're thinking, and make this a co-creative process. So know that, know that, that nothing you've read is absolute, that this is something that we're, that we're creating together tonight.
Okay. Well, first of all, we've received, I would say, at least probably over 100 comments in the last few weeks, and those comments were in response to the past, or the whatever, a different resolution. And I have never, I've not seen this, I don't know why the council didn't get it earlier, but I need time to read it, and I don't, I don't want to be reading it when people are speaking because I want to hear what people want to say. So how do you want to handle that? So do we start by posting the, because I believe, until people see this, they're going to be responding to a former resolution. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so how, how do you want to proceed with that? Do you want, do we want to put this on the screen and read it together? And, and then people can ponder if they want to respond to the new resolution, or, you know, what they want to do.
Mr. City Attorney, any?
Yeah, I would suggest that why don't we, assuming staff can pull it off, get it up on the screen. It's a short resolution, so it's worth getting it up on the screen, and we can read the text of it so that folks can have that in mind as they're providing their comments.
Sounds good.
Excellent, thank you.
And I know Mr. Montgomery went to get this sorted up on the screen.
Thank you, Weston.
It's going to be a minute.
Okay.
We can't do that right away.
This is the first time I've seen it.
Okay, it was, this was sent in by a couple of public comments a few days ago. Well, it could be, thank you for the question, it could be that, the original resolution that's in the staff report. I am, I am suggesting that we consider this. I mean, we can consider either both, either one, or not, as Councilmember Lang said, not passing it.
What, what, one of the reasons why this is coming up, that the change is coming up, is that we really heard from, we heard from people who did not feel safe having, with the first one. And that is not something I want to support. Or, and, and we don't, we don't want anyone to feel unsafe in our community.
And just one other, I would say the biggest difference between these two resolutions is that H.R. 786 does not assert any requirement that Israel withdraw military forces from Gaza, which allows Israel to maintain full readiness to defend itself. So...
There it is up on the screen, we can read it.
I'll read it.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I will read it, unless, unless...
Is the screen...
One of us should read it.
Okay, I'll read it.
Yeah.
Gallery.
It should be.
We can take turns.
You should.
One paragraph at a time.
You can read it.
Okay. Clear voice. Okay, all right, I'll start. H... What?
Okay, hold on a second. It's not on the, is it on the other screen there?
It's not there either.
Okay, so...
I might not have the ability to get it on the broadcast.
Oh, because we don't have that.
But it is definitely on the council chambers TVs right now. And many, many copies are being printed physically.
Thank you, Weston.
So yeah, we don't have the tech, the tech ability at this moment to get it on the, those two screens, but we have it on these screens, and we'll read it slowly.
Okay. Should I read all the names?
Skip the names.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your patience. Resolution: Calling for an immediate de-escalation and ceasefire in Israel and occupied Palestine. Whereas all human life is precious, and the targeting of civilians, no matter their faith or ethnicity, is a violation of international humanitarian law. Whereas between October 7th and October 16th, 2023, armed violence has claimed the lives of over 27 Palestinians, that nimmer has changed, and over 1,400 Israelis, including Americans, and wounded thousands more. Whereas hundreds of thousands of lives are at imminent risk if a ceasefire is not achieved and humanitarian aid is not delivered without delay. And whereas the federal government holds immense diplomatic power to save Israeli and Palestinian lives. Now therefore be it resolved that the House of Representatives urges the Biden administration to immediately call for and facilitate de-escalation and a ceasefire to urgently end the current violence, and calls upon the Biden administration to promptly send and facilitate the entry of humanitarian assistance into Gaza. So that, that, we'll begin public comment, and of course, this is a, it's an option. So we'll just, yeah.
We could also take, we could also, again, we could rework thing, language, and we can make this a co-creative process.
This resolution was never passed by Congress.
Well, well, let's wait, and we'll have public comment. Okay, so...
Wait, can I ask, what, can I have, I want to clarify. Was this passed by Congress?
No, it's a resolution.
It's not been passed.
No.
And, and what does this mean? It's...
It doesn't have a lot of support.
It doesn't have a lot of support.
Congress has not adopted H.R. 786.
Let's, and I'm going to ask the public, please, to refrain from any comments, yelling, or if we could stay quiet, that'd be great. If you could share, that would be wonderful.
I will print more.
And because of the large number of public comments, public comment will be two minutes. And I'm going to, I'm going to ask that everyone, please, when the chime goes off, to please stop talking. I appreciate, we all appreciate your desire to communicate. We just, in the spirit of equity. So we'll begin with Bobby Corbin.
Do a limit on the time.
Namaya Holmes, what? Is it, Mr. City Attorney?
I'm not sure the public understood your comments about the time.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Our policy is if we have more than 25 comments on a specific item, we drop from three minutes to two minutes. We have probably over 50 right now, so...
But this is a special meeting.
Please keep your comments to yourself. We'll be, counsel, are you, okay, two minutes?
No, I want to make a comment about that. What I would like to get out of this meeting, if nothing else, is that everyone feels heard. We would love for you to do your best. You know, I think this is a joint decision, whether it's two minutes or three minutes. I'm hoping that, that most of you can limit your comments to two minutes. But I, as a council member, if someone is saying something new, and they need a little extra, you know, a few extra seconds or even up to the full three minutes to speak, I want them to be heard. I don't want people to be nervous and talking fast. So, you know, just, if we can just cooperate and with the awareness that, are there 50 speakers?
Sixty, over sixty.
Over sixty?
Over sixty speakers.
Well, I, I...
However many are on Zoom.
Yeah, I'm prepared to stay here as long as it takes, personally. There's no, there's nothing else on the agenda. I would like to hear what people have to say.
Other council members?
I think I would prefer two.
Can't hear you, Rachel.
I said I would prefer two, and then, but if someone's saying something new, we can, we can have that option, but...
Yeah, we've come this far, we're in a special meeting, and you're here.
Counselmember Whitman?
Yeah.
My preference would be two minutes.
Okay, all right, well, we can, let's set it at two minutes, we'll set the timer at two minutes, and we'll go from there. Okay, first we have Bobby Corbin, then, just one second.
What did Rachel say?
I said two minutes, but...
Oh, you want two minutes? Oh, I thought you were supporting that people could speak. Okay, sorry.
And also, please, if you, if you agree with some, another speaker, if you could just say ditto, that would be wonderful. So Bobby Corbin, Namaya Holmes, and I'm sorry if I mispronounced any of your names, and Anthony Hirsch.
Okay, so do I push this green button when I want to start? Is that what happens?
Wait for Weston to start it in, because Weston will start the clock.
Yeah, you don't have to wait on the clock. I'll take care of the timer. You just wait until the timer starts.
We don't have our usual crew of staff. It's just Weston, there's no one behind him. We don't have anyone behind Weston tonight.
Don't have the man behind the curtain.
So...
Here's Weston.
You are the man behind the curtain, Weston.
All right, are we ready?
Yes.
My name is Bobby Corbin, I live in Ojai, and I have served four years on the Ojai Planning Commission. You must vote no on this resolution. Today's New York Times says you're doing exactly what the Hamas terrorists want, blaming Israel for this war. Hamas is like bindweed in the garden, wrapping itself around civilians, knowing that civilians will be killed rooting out these terrorists. You know that Israel did not start this brutal war. Naively, your resolution calls for a permanent ceasefire and for Israel to put down their weapons, although you've qualified that. Yet Hamas terrorists have written in their charter, "They will never stop until the state of Israel is annihilated and Jews worldwide are destroyed." You're asking the wrong side to stop fighting. Hamas launched this brutal massacre during a ceasefire and also rejected a ceasefire today. When its counsored, council considered this mayor, matter, the mayor of Berkeley stated, "These resolutions will not end violence abroad, but they do fan flames of hatred here at home." This is just what you do with this resolution. Why, we elected you to effect a meaningful change in the City of Ojai. Isn't it ironic that as a city of peace, we fight endlessly and bitterly over bike lanes, planting trees, and what shade of white to paint our buildings with no resolution? You have no expertise in international policy as a group. How can you set yourself up as arbiters of world peace when you can't make peace at home? Please start with resolutions for our city. Shut this down and vote no. Golda Meir said, "When peace comes, we'll perhaps in time be able to forgive the Arabs for killing our sons, but it will be harder for us to forgive them for having forced us to kill their sons." None of us are happy with this situation.
Mayor?
Thank you, Bobby.
Again, I want to make a request that you not stop a speaker when they, when it's clear they only have a few sentences. I really feel this is a wonderful opportunity to hear from people, and they've, you know, they've prepared state, they've prepared statements.
I understand that, Mayor, also in the spirit of equity, people do limit themselves to the two minutes, as requested, so that's the other side of that.
I mean, she had three minutes.
Okay.
The other side is that if we are not discussing what we're actually going to do till 10 or 11 tonight, how many of these people are still going to be here to hear it?
So I think we really do...
It's a trade-off.
Have to adhere. And one, you can stay a lot in two minutes, thank you for your patience. Okay, Weston, are you ready for the timer?
Ready.
Okay, and Weston has the timer, right? Okay.
Naima.
Naima.
My name is Naima, I live in Miners Oaks. I'm here as a mother of a four-year-old, a 19-year-old, and a 24-year-old. 10,000 children have been bombed, shot, burned, and more are starving. 23,000 children orphaned. This is not a war, when 45% of the victims are children. Our children are watching other children die, while adults do nothing. Worse, while adults justify it. This is not a war, it is genocide, playing out livestream. Friendly fire is killing hostages. This is not a war when the people you went to war for, the hostages' families are screaming ceasefire. 10,000 children, 3,000 children a month. What will you tell the children, your children, our children, Ojai? Fighting to protect the land, natural resources, the environment, the planet, but Ojai, there's no future if we allow our children to be the target of hate killings, children to be the targets of war. The idea that you can stamp out religion, ideology, culture, and history by killing the children, bombing whole families, is the end of democracy, the end of humanity, something that the elders here on both sides know too well. That is hell, and God help us. As a mother who had to hold her own daughter as she took her last breath, this kills your soul. It is unnatural and against all laws of nature. And to take that pain, times it by tens of thousands, is truly the worst thing you could unleash upon the world. And all of us, all of us in America are complicit, not in our names. Ceasefire now.
Thank you, Namaya. And to the, to the audience...
And I would like to say what these boards are. These boards represent 3,000 children that were killed in one month of October. There are tons of children under one, tons of children one, two, three, and four, and this was one month, and every month, 3,000 more children die.
Thank you. And I'm going to ask the audience if you can refrain from any clapping, or of course booing, and if we could just listen, and you can always use jazz hands to, to agree. Okay, next we have Anthony Hirsch, then David Harshada Wagner, and then Fred Rothenberg.
Yep. Good evening, Mayor Stix and members of the City Council. You know, with the new language that you brought tonight, it changes some of the impact of the things that have been written by many of the members here. I don't think it changes what I have to say, and we'll see at the end. My name is Anthony Hirsch, I live in Ojai. I have practiced medicine in the... practiced medicine in the twen, for 25 years in Ventura County. In 1997, a swastika was painted on the door of the temple in Ojai. The next day, members of most of the different religious sects came together to repair that door. In 2019, there is the well-known incident that occurred at Matilah High Junior High School. The need to promote religious freedoms saw the creation of the Ojai Interfaith Council. Ojai is a city of tolerance and does seek peace. This resolution, as written, fosters hate, not peace. This is a one-sided resolution, essentially blaming Israel for all the ravages that a war produces. It is causing rifts in the fabric of our community and is divisive. It is the little, it is the literary swastika on the temple door. The Jewish community of Ojai is not responsible for this war, but are forced to bear a large amount of fear because of it, requiring armed security at events. Resolutions such as this, as written, serve only to increase hate and fear. I urge you to vote no in the name of peace for our community. Having Israel maintain the forces in Gaza, as you mentioned, is, is fine. It's appropriate. It doesn't change the fact that a resolution such as this causes fear in the Jewish community.
Thank you, Tony. Next, we have David Hershada Wagner, then Fred Rothenberg, and then Kelly Levine.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Have you seen the videos of the children, the dead children? It's a serious question. Have you seen that the other day, the Israeli Defense Forces just bulldozed a whole tent encampment and buried all the people alive? Did you, did you see that report? Did you see the fake videos of the doctors and shopkeepers stripped down and, and doing the false surrender? Did you see that? This is not a war. It's not even a fight. They're not fighting anyone, because the people that they're killing can't fight back. 70% of the ordinances that are dropped by Israel, that we provide as U.S. taxpayers, are called dumb bombs. That means that they have, they just drop them. They're not guided ordinances. They're not fighting Hamas. They're destroying Gaza so that they can build condos. Have you seen that report? Come on. If you pass this resolution, it's not going to do anything. It's probably not going to stop Israel. It's not going to stop the U.S. war machine. It's probably not going to do anything. But if you don't pass this resolution, if you vote no against this, man, you guys are on the dark side of a dark moment of history, man. I mean, karma is a thing, and if we, as Ojai, are going to give the BS lip service of being a city of peace, come on. Shame on you for even putting the language in the resolution that Israel should stay in Gaza.
Thank you, David. Next, we have Fred Rothenberg, then Kelly Levine, and then Brenton Butler.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak about the resolution before the council. My name is Fred Rothenberg, and I've lived in the Ojai Valley for 23 years. I'm 84 years old and a first-generation American. My parents immigrated to the United States 100 years ago from Ukraine, to escape the bigotry and racism expressed against Jews that often ended the lives of their relatives and their neighbors. Others stayed in Europe and fell victim to the Nazi Holocaust. Because of these experiences, I'm particularly sensitive to anything that negatively impacts Jews as a whole, not the least of which is separation from the community at large. While wholesale racism, racism in Ojai is unlikely, I believe the resolution is unnecessary and divisive. I feel strongly enough to make this the first time that I've appeared before you, where I hope I can help you understand why I'm against it. I abhor violence, and wish for an end to the death and destruction in Gaza and Israel. However, I also cringe at the discord in Ojai that will increase because of the resolution and the unintended consequences that will follow. Friends and neighbors will take sides. Blame will be assigned. A they versus us mentality will take hold. Fences will be built, and fears will increase. The causes of, and the solutions to the war in the Middle East are issues that will not be resolved by an Ojai petition blessed by the city council. While a feel-good attitude may exhilarate some, in and outside the community, it will depress others. It will do nothing to bring the citizens of Ojai together in common cause, further limiting our ability to address those problems that require the full attention of the council.
Thank you, Fred. Next.
Mayor, excuse me, and everyone, that first beep is a 30-second warning. You still have some time.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Just to clarify.
Okay.
I don't have much, anyway. I vouch you to leave the end-of-war strategy to those at a national level, while we express our personal opinions through the ballot box and through individual communications with our congressional representatives. Please do not approve this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Next, we have Kelly Levine, then Brenton Butler, and then Charlie Cartwright.
I believe that some of the wording of the resolution has changed, but I don't think its tone has changed. And I am opposed to the resolution. Ojai is already a city of international peace. And why this resolution, and why now? Let me be blunt, it only singles out Israel and the world's Jewish population. It's ill-timed, it's ill-advised, and it is definitely racist against Jews, and I don't believe that this is intended. But just because you don't think it is, or you don't believe it, or you don't understand, doesn't make it not so. It is so. We are scared. We are heartbroken when we see these children behind us. We are heartbroken. Your Jewish community is informing you what this means to them, and I hope that you listen, and I hope that you vote no on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Next, we have Brenton Butler, then Charlie Cartwright, and then Louise Winhel.
It's like what Edward said. Is it accidental? You act so occidental, talking about what's for dinner. You want something oriental? Like I bet you do, cuz holding that yoga pose on your Turkish rug. Got that eastern soul with that western mind on stolen land, but your God said it's fine. An enlightened state created through light and space. Where have I heard that before? New cake, same old recipe. Haven't you heard, if you think positive, you can manifest destiny? Is that the secret? Rewrite history until it's all right? Destroy entire bloodlines until it's all white? When ceasefire is offensive, bombing babies is defensive? Where does the human lie? The only way to justify genocide is to dehumanize. War is peace. Ignorance is strength. Ceasefire is anti-Semitic. Occupation is liberation. A naysayer is just a jealous critique. Among other things, the doublethink makes my stomach sink. If the truth offends, we mustn't speak. Tell that dying child as he lays in ruins, "This is your fault. You knew what Hamas was doing." Give a history lesson to the deceased. Tell them kids that got bombed on the beach that your life ain't worth the same as a kid from Ukraine that gave himself a Hebrew last name. Replace the village names to sound more native, right? Sound familiar, Ojai? Oh, my, Noradoff just don't got the same bite. Guess facts do care about your feelings, and we can twist them so we can sleep at night. Dirty soul, but at least I got on my Kundalini whites. However, this is not justice, just the ticks of an autistic who probably just needs therapists. The dead of the oppressed don't affect us. The walls are up. Those people are separate. I guess this is Old Testament. Now we do as Pharaoh did. The death toll don't count. Even algebra is terrorist. Don't trust the figures. Even the numbers are Arabic. It's like what Edward said.
Thank you, Brenton. Okay. Next, we have Charlie Cartwright, then Louise Winhel, and then Dave Wortleeb.
My name is Charlie Cartwright. I am not Jewish, but I cannot remain silent when I become aware of the resolution that's being addressed tonight. As a former state and national teacher of the year, I urge you to continue to educate yourselves with integrity and ethical responsibility as you make decisions that have the power to significantly affect antisemitism in the city of Ojai, the city of international peace.
Thank you, Charlie. Next, we have Louise Winhel, then Dave Wortleeb, and then Nicole Hawkins.
My name is Louise Winhel. Ojai, as you have said, has been an official city of peace since 2015. The resolution before this council ostensibly promotes working for peace in the Israeli Hamas war. However, this resolution has some serious flaws in its promotion and advocacy of peace. It suggests that only one side, Israel, should not be funded, and that only one side, Israel, should withdraw from the field of battle. Where is the fairness and justice in those suggestions? How does this unfairness and injustice promote peace? Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. Next, we have Dave Wortleeb, then Nicole Hawkins, and then Casey Rodriguez.
We are residents of Ojai. We love living here. We are registered voters in Ventura County, and we are Jewish. When I read the proposed resolution that is before the council, I was both appalled and very scared. And I don't believe the language of H.R. 786, which has not yet been passed in Congress, changes the intent at all. I have two points I'd like to make to you. First, in the name of supporting peace, all nine of the very carefully worded preambles in the proposed resolution, the whereas list, covers every possible base. Ojai is a city of peace, and you can fill in the blanks here. Condemning every possible phobia, as well as several anti-something-er others, they're all there in the whereases of the proposal. These are designed to soften the intent of the resolution itself. What do any of them have to do with the actual resolution itself? Second point, I am completely puzzled why a local government, Ojai City Council, is even considering a proposal asking the U.S. Congress to defund support for Israel. The council needs to understand that the resolution is sowing, is, the resolution is sowing divisiveness and hatred in the city of Ojai. It is so one-sided that instead of supporting peace, it is stirring the cauldron of fear and hate. I urge you to vote it down, or any other resolution with similar intent. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Next, we have Nicole Hawkins, then Casey Rodriguez, and then Brianna Skelly.
Thank you. I'm curious, genuinely, why the resolution is seeming one-sided. To my understanding, ceasefire is the most peaceful phrase I could ever imagine. It specifies that we should also return all hostages, that there should be a permanent ceasefire. I've heard mutterings that Hamas has rejected opportunities for a ceasefire, when in actuality they just said it needs to be a permanent ceasefire, rather than a few days of pausing bombing on innocent civilians. So I think that something important to remember is that a lot of the news that we are getting is being funded by people in power, and that if you look at what's being recorded by Palestinians on the ground every day, you can't deny what's happening to them, and you cannot pretend that they are at all affiliated with terrorist groups, that these children are just part of a game, and that their death is justified in any way. I know our group would support this, the act of peace and saving people. We'd love world peace, as we've said. Why this is important right now is because of the names that are being held up by the daily deaths by the, that are being funded with our tax dollars. Cole Arthur Riley said, "When you don't know who to trust, listen to the one who's still bleeding." And I'd like to invite us all to listen and look at the direct sources that are showing us what's happening, and I don't think that it actually takes much to recognize the truth. We want this to be passed because we actually want peace, not because there's any antisemitism or any ulterior motives. We actively fight antisemitic crimes and hate speech.
Thank, thank you, Nicole. Next, we have Casey Rodriguez, then Brianna Skelly, and then Lynn, Mr. Lindsay Thompson.
Haku. Hello. Even though I'm a state executive board member of the California Democratic Party, tonight, I speak only for myself, a Schumash woman, who is the offspring of mighty people who overcame the genocide that took place on this very land, who scientifically proven carries international, intergenerational trauma in my DNA. Hate, ignorance is not a K on either side. I was hesitant in coming tonight to speak in person due to the weather, but I knew coming to support the people of Palestine and for peace for all people was more important than my own comfort. And to show despite what many believe, there are Democrats working inside that have been to Sacramento, taking strong stands, including myself. Suzha, thank you for trying to give us all three minutes to be heard. In the midst of this holiday season, I am recalling a song called "Do You Hear What I Hear" by Bing Cosby. I believe tonight, we should all imagine Mr. Cosby's voice asking us all, "Do we truly hear what I hear, as well as listen to what I say? Pray for peace, people everywhere, listen to what I say. The child sleeping in the night, he will bring us goodness and light. Tonight, the child is you, the child is you, that child is you, that child is you, that child is you, and that child is all of us." Ojai City must encler their name, among other cities such as Long Beach, that added for our declaration last night. If Ojai can take a stand for elephants, surely Ojai can take a courageous stand for human lives, especially children. All lives are sacred and should be protected. Back to being Schumash, my ancestors, my ancestors were silenced, but I will not be. I'll continue speaking because the trauma of genocide resides in my DNA, preventing me from settling into privilege. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. And just a reminder, if you can hold your applause. Next, we have Brianna Skelly, then Mr. Lindsay Thompson, and then Michelle Johnson.
Hi, my name is Brianna Skelly. I'm a resident of Oakland. I prepared several statements. I've been up here before, and I've spoken, and I just want to speak from my heart and to some of the things that I've heard this evening. It does matter that we vote in support of a ceasefire. It really, really does matter, and we can ask, as a city council, as a town, why, but I think you know. I think you know in your hearts, and if you've been seeing the things that I've been seeing, that I think everyone speaking towards support for a ceasefire have been seeing. I almost can't believe the people who are speaking against this, they must have not been seeing. Because if they have been seeing, and still are thinking about a fear beyond themselves towards the children that are being bombed daily right now as we speak, that are dying under rubble as we speak, that are onslaughted at every moment, that are told they are safe to go one place, and then they are bombed, and they are not. There is no way we can't say we are in support, as a people and as a community, to stand up for an injustice. These are the things that will make the difference as we move forward in humanity. I truly believe that, and I'm really sorry for anyone who feels afraid. I know the people who are here organizing for a ceasefire would also be the ones to stand up against antisemitism in this community. I will be there.
Can we have order, please? Quiet, please?
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Brianna. Next, we have Mr. Lindsay Thompson, then Michelle Johnson, and then James Richmond.
Hi, my name is Lynn Thompson. I own Ranch Royale.
I own Ranch Royale, 10480 Creek Road. A lot of you have driven by my ranch. You see it with the lights on. I'm not a political person. I've stayed out of politics in my businesses my entire life, but something changed when Israel was attacked. I want to support Israel tonight. I put up a sign on my fence, an Israeli flag, which was torn to rip to shreds not two weeks ago. That pissed me off. I'm not afraid. This is the land, home of the free and the brave, right? I'm not afraid here today. I'm mad. I'm mad that this city of Ojai, this city of peace, it's so full of shit. Since I've been here for six years, I've put up with every woke, liberal, far-out religious, whatever thing that you could possibly think that's out there. I've tolerated. I've never said anything to anybody. I've never done any negative act. And the one expression I put up, the one time I do, I put an Israeli flag on the fence of my ranch, it's torn to shreds. Well, I'm going to put up a lot bigger display, it's coming. And I don't think it's any business of this council to do this. You're helping Hamas, a terrorist organization. You're giving them time to regroup so they can kill more Jews. It's absolute bullshit. Any Jew that's afraid, or any Muslim, or any other religious person that's afraid, or you have any reason to be afraid, you can come to my ranch, and I'll protect you. Okay? You can find refuge at my ranch.
Could you please direct the council?
You're very welcome, everyone that's afraid, to come and stay with me. I'll provide for you. And I really urge you not to do this. It's a one-sided bullshit thing, and you guys know it.
Thank you, Lynn. Next, we have Michelle Johnson. Quiet, please. Michelle Johnson, Elliot Richmond, and then Cyrus Mayer.
Am I ready? Thank you for this opportunity. I stand alongside a diverse and united coalition of various ethnicities and faiths, resolutely committed to stopping a genocide. We implore our city to join us in advocating for an end to violence, acts of hatred, and ethnic cleansing. Our stance against hate and injustice has been consistent throughout the years, so much so that in February of 2021, some of the members of our group here today confronted another deplorable incident where a symbol evocative of genocide was defaced on a peace sign displayed on a resident's lawn here in Ojai. Refusing to remain silent then, we beat our drums, as we are now. We rallied for our community to be safeguards against future incidences of hate and violence. Our steadfast commitment ultimately triumphed over hatred, so much so that the Ojai Valley News reported the collective efforts in an article titled "Outpouring of Love Counters Hate" on Ojai Peace Sign in March of 2021. And so, in that same spirit of unity and defiance, we stand here once more against hatred, injustice, and genocide. We call upon Ojai to join us in countering hate with love as we endeavor towards transforming our city, committed to peace, to embody peace for all inhabitants, and I emphasize "all." Everyone deserves peace. Everyone deserves for the violence to stop. Everyone deserves for the bombs and the fires to cease, and we hope to move the city to support that resolution. And we want all to feel safe, and we would put our bodies on the line for you all to feel safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Next, we have James Richmond, then Elliot Richmond, and then Cyrus Mayer.
My name is Jim Richmond. I'm a longtime resident of the city of Ojai. My grandfather came to the U.S. in 1904 after his entire family was slaughtered in the Black Sea area by Russians. The lie then was that Jews were using baby's blood to make matzah. One of the lies today is Jews are committing genocide. Genocide is a legal term from Article 3, sorry, Article 2 of the Geneva Convention to describe a crime committed with the intent to destroy a national, ethnic, racial, or religious group. It certainly does not include Israel's war of survival to eliminate a terrorist group, Hamas, even if Hamas tactics result in the death of civilians as a result of Hamas's crime, international crime, war crime, of using civilians as human shields. So we have Hamas committing war crimes while accusing Israel of one. This is a racist, antisemitic semitism in its purest form. So from 1967 to 2005, the Palestinian population of Gaza grew from 350,000 to 1.8 million. This is not a genocide. Meanwhile, almost 2 million Palestinian Arabs live peaceful lives in Israel. In fact, the only place that a Palestinian can vote in the Middle East is in Israel. The use of the vile accusation against Israel is to demean and delegitimize the Jewish state, laying the groundwork for its elimination from the river to the sea.
Thank you, Jim.
Voting for any resolution like this in this context
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
Is a vote for genocide.
Thank you, Jim. Okay. Can I ask everyone to please be respectful? Next, we have Elliot Richmond, then we have Cyrus Mayer, and then we have Nadine Zial.
Hi there. My name is Elliot, and I've lived in Ojai for 10 years. The fact that we are considering a resolution that unilaterally benefits an extremist, racist, jihadist group that explicitly calls for violence and murder, violence is their first and primary methodology, a group who committed the most barbaric and bloodthirsty acts in recent history and filmed the atrocities with glee, is utterly unconscionable. It is apparent to our own U.S. government, to the U.K., other allies, not to mention Israel, a transparent and diverse democracy where Palestinian Muslim Israelis are full citizens with equal rights, that this extremist hatred that is so fundamentally and unwaveringly opposed to peace in any form like that, like Boko Haram or ISIS, must be defeated if anyone in the region, particularly Palestinian people, held captive by Hamas and inculcated with hatred and aspirations only of death through martyrdom, are to have any chance at peace in the future. This resolution may be cloaked in the guise of peace, but the side that openly states its desire for bloodshed and its mission to annihilate an entire race of people, both in Israel and abroad, is for it. The only chance for a long-lasting peace is victory against that ideology of hatred. A ceasefire like the one in place on October 6th allows the ideology of hatred to fester and strengthen and grow. A ceasefire like the one already in place on October 6th would apply to one side only and be used as a tool by Hamas and violated when it saw fit. But what is perhaps most bewildering and sad is that you would risk sowing even more division than there is already in our small town of Ojai for a resolution that will do nothing material except humiliate a minority ethnic population here, one that is still freshly grieving the rape mutilation beheading and burning, the literal melting together of its women and children, and the open gloating and celebration of that murderous rampage by Hamas, Hezbollah, their sponsor Iran, and their brainwashed imprisoned populations, and their open calls to do it again at the next opportunity.
Thank you, Elliot. Next, we have
I want to make a request that we get rid of that, that sound. It's just, it's not right for the atmosphere for what's being discussed. You know, people are doing their best to finish. I really
Well, we need some kind of something.
What happened to the chime?
I'll need counsel direction.
Is it possible to get the
Yes, I can take the sound away.
I don't know if we can get that other chime back. That other chime requires on a different text system, and again, we don't have any staff for the text system.
I'm okay with it.
It's up to counsel.
The sound.
So light or sound?
The light is enough.
Does Member Whitman?
Light, and what does it matter if it's 10 seconds more?
I can take
Can you decrease the volume on the sound?
No. I can take the sound away, and we can politely remind them.
I don't think anybody's going to stop. We saw that at the last meeting.
Oh, okay.
People's time ended, and they continued talking for a minute or more. So I think the sound, I think keep the beep because we need to
Okay, keep the beep. All right, council majority says keep the beep.
Understood.
And thank you for accommodating the beep. All right, Cyrus, Cyrus, and then we have Nadine Zial, and then Leslie Letofsky.
Shalom. Salaam alaikum. My name is Cyrus. My mother is an Ashkenazi Jew, and my father is from Iran. You know, in the previous meetings, I've come with a written statement, and the previous meeting before this one included a list of human rights violations that Israel has committed based on the international human rights experts of Amnesty International, Red Cross, and within the United Nations. I think that these bodies of international human rights experts are a much better platform to learn about what's going on in Israel and Palestine as opposed to our community, that we might not have as much experience within this field. I would like to say that, you know, from my heart, you know, today I would like to speak from my heart. And today I would like to say that, as my sister said before me, that we are standing on a land that is founded on a genocide, a genocide of the Shumash nation, a genocide of indigenous people across Turtle Island. And today is an opportunity to stand up against genocide in Palestine. Mayor Stix and Councilmember Lang, we spoke last night, and you both mentioned that you do believe that it's a genocide that is occurring in Palestine at this moment. And I want to echo that support in recognizing what's going on and recognizing our responsibility here to make a moment, to take advantage of this moment, and to truly do something that can have an impact. I'm disgusted and saddened by my Jewish community that comes here and uses this idea of feeling unsafe without even saying why they feel unsafe. In fact, it is us who is unsafe. There's a man back here who has threatened us since we've been here. I've told security, I've told the police, nobody has come to help us. It is, we are the ones who have been threatened consistently, including my brother who almost got run off on his bike. We're the ones experiencing an unsafe community.
Thank you, Cyrus.
And we ask for that to be addressed.
Thank you.
So please, I ask for your support.
Thank you.
What will our grandchildren remember? What will they remember?
I'm going to ask you all once again if you can just remain quiet and listen respectfully, especially those of you who are outside. Nadine Zial, Leslie Letofsky, and then Debbie Bloom.
Okay, you pronounced my name wrong, so I'm just going to politely correct you. Okay, it's Nadine Ziad. Okay. Maybe my handwriting's a bit messy. Okay. Good evening. My name is Nadine Ziad. I am the daughter and granddaughter of Palestinian refugees who were forcibly removed from their homeland and possessions in 1967. Seventy-five years ago, Israel claimed statehood in historic Palestine, since the indigenous Palestinians have been occupied in their own land by Israeli colonizers. Today is the 75th day of Israel's carpet bombing on the civilians of Palestine's Gaza and aid workers. As of today, 20,000 Palestinians at least have been killed in the Gaza Strip, according to officials, at least 8,000 children and 6,200 women. Israel is targeting civilians. In 2007, Israel imposed an indefinite blockade on Gaza that's ongoing to present day. What is happening in Gaza is not a war. It is ethnic cleansing, genocide, deliberate and systematic killing. It's wrongly called a war when in actuality it is human annihilation in a small enclaved area of 2 million Palestinians. Israel deploys deadly carpet bombing and restricts aid from entering. According to the Euromed Human Rights Monitor, Israel has dropped 25,000 tons of explosives on the Gaza Strip, equivalent to two nuclear bombs. 71% of Gaza's population are experiencing severe levels of hunger. 98% of Gaza's population report inadequate food consumption. Palestinians in Gaza are facing death by starvation in addition to Israel's ongoing bombardment and lack of medical aid due to Israel's complete siege. They're doing surgery without anesthesia. Israel is bombing civilian infrastructure, hospitals, schools, universities. The St. Perifus Church, built in 425 CE, the oldest church in the world, was bombed. The third oldest church in the world was bombed by Israel. Pope Francis called Israel's actions terrorism after a Christian elderly mother and her daughter were shot dead on the grounds of the Catholic Church in Gaza. Gaza's Christian community is dwindling and fear extinction. The U.N. reports at least 300 healthcare workers have been killed in Gaza. 100 journalists have been killed, 97 in Gaza and three in Lebanon. According to the U.N., that's more death than any single conflict in the organization's 78-year history.
Thank you, Nadine. Thank you.
Can I finish? I may be the only Palestinian in this room. I may be the only Palestinian that you'll ever meet. I am on this land because my family have become refugees.
Please proceed, Nadine.
According to the U.N., that's more death than in any single conflict in the organization's 78-year history. The genocide in Gaza
I'm going to ask, Nadine, can you pause for a minute? Could everyone please be quiet? Counsel agreed to allow Nadine to continue, so if you could please just remain silent.
Let her finish.
Nadine?
May I finish?
Counsel has decided to let you finish, so let's, if you could all respect Council Majority's decision, thank you.
Fifty-eight miles away from Gaza, in the occupied West Bank, 4,540 Palestinians have been arrested by the Israeli occupation forces since October 7. Even in Bethlehem, the birthplace of Jesus, peace be upon him, is affected. In Bethlehem, the Church of Nativity canceled Christmas celebrations due to the genocide in Gaza. Reverend Munder Isaac states, "If Christ were born today, he would be under the rubble in Israeli shelling." Bethlehem is sad and broken," end quote. In Manger Square, the Lutheran Church is displaying a nativity scene that shows Jesus, peace be upon him, as a child born in the rubble to reflect the destruction in Gaza. Away from Gaza, southern Lebanon has been bombed continuously for 72 straight days. 60,000 Lebanese have been displaced from their homes. Just because the media ignores Lebanon does not mean that its people are not being impacted. The collective punishment of Gaza's civilian population amounts to a war crime. It is cruel and inhumane. President Biden has betrayed Palestinians and Lebanese Americans by continuing to fund Israeli terrorism. Biden has presented an aid package of $14.3 billion. Shame on you. 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 They said I can finish. Can you respect what they said? They said I can finish. Can you respect what they said? They said I can finish. Can you respect what they said? They said I can finish. Can you respect what they said? They said I can finish. Can you respect what they said?
They said she can finish. They said she can finish. They said she can finish. They said she can finish.
I have one paragraph left.
They literally voted that it wasn't the same as everyone. Shame on you. Disgusting. Disgusting. She's a Palestinian. Calm down. Calm down. Just let me
Calm down.
The only Palestinian in this whole meeting
I have a friend who's in Southern California. He works in Southern California. He's lost 22 family members from the bombing. He's lost 22 family members in Gaza. No, I'm not done. I have one more paragraph, and you scared away the board. I have one more paragraph, and you scared away the board.
No, I'm not done. I have one more paragraph and you scared away the board. You tell us.